Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We apologize for starting a little late, but just wanted to make sure that we were well aware and everybody had an opportunity to get here. And I'm hoping more folks will be here. And I'm, I, we are just proud to be here in Ithaca, New York. Yes. If you've never been to Ithaca, you should come because I'll just use the stickers that I see on every car, that Ithaca is gorgeous, and it absolutely is. And the ride here from Rochester was absolutely beautiful. So thank you all for being here and good afternoon. And I'm proud to say that I am serving as the, um, the chair of this great commission. My name is Dr. Shawna Hawkins, and I am here with my colleagues. And we are three of the nine commissioners for the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies. And we are proud to be with you here tonight. So I am going to, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. And I'm just going to pause and make room for my commissioners to introduce themselves and to my left and to my right.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Lynda Brown Robinson, and I hail from Syracuse, New York currently. Originally, I'm from Mount Vernon, New York. And yeah, let's hear it. Or as my husband would say, he's from the Bron X. So I like to say Mount Vernon won out. So I'm very happy to be here. I've been here a number of times, but I have never been in the city proper. So I took a little view of downtown because I had more twists and turns than I needed to take. So thank you for hosting us, and we look forward to a robust evening.
Yes.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. My name is Tim Hoag, and I hail from Buffalo, New York.
Yes. Yes, Buffalo.
We're gonna try that one more time. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Hoag, and I hail from Buffalo, New York. Yes, this is my first time in Ithaca, and it is a beautiful place. And I plan on coming back to visit and spend time with my family here to check some stuff out. So thank you for that. My, my full-time daytime job is Commissioner of the New York State Department of Civil Service and the President of Civil Service Commission. So I get the pleasure to, to, to serve as a public servant, and so that, that is meaningful to me. And to see the individuals in this room this evening to ready and prepared to discuss this important topic is, is, is great. And I'm, I'm excited and looking forward to get to our presentations and our discussion. So thank you for having us here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoag. And since everyone is repping their community and city, I am, I'm coming from Rochester, New York, and I am grateful to be living in this community. But my, my hometown is Brooklyn, New York. Yes. All right, some Brooklyn, okay, okay.
I mean, what's up with all this natural love? I mean, no, I love the love. It's all right.
It's automatic. It's automatic. But I actually lived in Cortlandt for a couple of years. I actually lived in Homer, New York. So I would come to Ithaca often.
You're right around the corner.
Right around the corner. Right around the corner. And my nephew went to Cornell University, so I would pick him up and we would drive back. So, um, but grateful to be here again. And thank you all for being here. Give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you. And today's public hearing is on the homeland of the Cayuga Nation and the Haudasani Confederacy. And we want to honor them and honor the nation. And we're grateful for the Cayuga's enduring connection to this land and recognize the ongoing struggles of all First Nations in sovereignty and justice. The story of Black New Yorkers begins with the nation, with the native nations here first and still. So today, today's hearing aims to gather insights and testimonies on matters related to New York Community Commission on Reparation Remedies, with the particular focus on today on Black New Yorkers in education. And remember, the public hearings are in themselves part of our reparations work. This is truth-seeking and truth-telling, and it's part of the satisfaction of one of the forms, the five forms of reparations under United Nations legal framework. We do honor this work, and so we want to call out the suffering and pain of enslaved Black New Yorkers and the structural and systemic harm that Black New Yorkers face and continue to face due to anti-Black policies and structures. Today's agenda includes brief remarks from our elected officials, and we are just really excited about your mayor. And, and wanted to see this happen, and I understand that our mayor is the first mayor, Robert G. Contelmo, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it, okay, Contelmo, thank you. Trying to get it earlier and make sure I had it right, and I'm grateful that you're here. So we'll hear remarks from our mayor, and then we'll hear from Councilwoman Phoebe Brown.
We can clap for that.
Yes. Let's get excited for our mayor, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, and welcome to Ithaca. I'll be brief. Just wanted to say, on behalf of our community, I want to express deep gratitude to the commissioners from the New York State Community Commission on Reparation Remedies for the work that you are undertaking. And it's essential to building a more just and equitable New York. Ithaca is proud to host you today. Our city has had a long history of engagement in the struggle for racial justice, uh, from abolition, uh, in the Underground Railroad, to our more recent efforts to confront housing segregation, expand opportunity, and address systemic inequality. And yet, we also know that history is not abstract. It lives here. Generations of Black Ithacans have endured divestment, displacement, and discrimination with impacts that remain visible in our housing patterns, income gaps, and public health disparities. This is why Ithaca must not only welcome this commission, but play an active role in its work. Reparations cannot be symbolic. They must be concrete, measurable, and transformative for the lives that they touch. This requires cities like ours to step forward, share our stories, and, like the work of Alderson Brown, help pilot local strategies that can potentially scale statewide. In recent years, we've recommitted ourselves to thinking about housing and land use, strengthening worker protections, and advancing climate justice, all through an equity lens. But the deeper structural changes required, true repair for centuries of harm, will take partnership with the state and leadership from this commission. We are ready to be a partner. We are ready to listen, learn, and act. And we are committed to ensuring that Ithaca's voice and experience are part of the broader statewide reckoning and renewal. So commissioners, thank you for your service, your courage, and your commitment to justice. We welcome you, and we look forward to walking this road together ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Mayor, we thank you for that incredible, that incredible welcome, and we are just proud to be here. We couldn't wait to get here. And I understand, I may have pronounced, um, the Nation of the Haudasani Confederacy incorrectly, and I apologize. Next, we will hear from our, um, Councilwoman.
Phoebe Brown, um, before we get started, I'd like for everybody to join me and welcome in our ancestors into this space to guide us, to protect us, keep us sane, and most of all, keep us in love. Thank you. Okay, I'm Phoebe Brown, the, uh, First Ward Council Person. And, um, from the very beginning, Jorge and I have fought to do, to bring reparations to the city of Ithaca. We've got a lot of pushback, and we waited for quite some time, and we finally got it passed, uh, last year for $50,000 for the research of reparations in the city of Ithaca. It's not been easy. It, it, it hasn't been easy. It's been a long road. A lot of people still don't understand why Black people deserve reparations. They don't want to accept, most other, uh, communities have gotten their reparations, right? And we haven't, right? And it's not right. We've built this country, no matter what they try to tell you other. But for me, this was like one of the biggest reasons why I wanted to be on the council. And, and I, you know, fought hard with Jorge, defending, who was on the, uh, council with me at the time. This is my last few months on the council. I leave it this in the hands of making sure that the council continues, continues to do this research. And what I told him right away, "Research for what? Why are we researching what we know Black people deserve? They worked for free." Not only that, they suffered some cruelty in, throughout the history and still today. And you mean to tell me we gotta go back and forth, or why, when, where? That has not happened with anyone else. So I'm very passionate about this. I'm very, uh, was a little like, oh, why did the New York Commission decide to come to Ithaca, right? I hope this don't interfere with the work that we've been doing here in Ithaca. And how can we both embrace one another and make sure this happens, right? So most people are worried about, "Oh, we can't give them money. We can't..." But there's so many other ways and working together to make sure that the Black community is repaid for their harm. It's nothing as simple, it's, it's simple probably to me and important to me. I'm grateful to be here in Ithaca. I moved to Ithaca, and when we repping places, I'm from Harlem, New York, as you. Y'all know how we do in Harlem, right? But, um, I'm just really glad to be here tonight. And I'm glad, you know, I want this room packed, right? That's what I would have liked to see. But I'm seeing some faces in here that are very important. And I know, one thing we do well, we don't beat the drums no more, but we will send out messages to our people through the phone, on social media, Instagram, TikTok, whatever, letting them know what's happening. Because this is not always a comfortable space for our people. But what we do know is, when we leave here, share with another friend, right? Let them know how important this is, how long we've waited. And we can't wait no more. Period, point blank. We ready to do the right thing for Black people in this country when everybody fights against it. I didn't prepare a speech, but I do want to know one thing. I just want to hear one thing from this community that's here today. I like everybody, when I say one, two, three, to repeat after me, "Reparations now." One, two, three. Reparations now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. We are grateful to have you here today. I would like to just take you quickly, we've done this slide every time that we've held the, um, one of our public hearings, but want to take you quickly through the slide and give you a brief overview of the commission, our charge, and the work that we are set to do. Just give me one second. And I'm going to go through this quickly, um, and remind you all that, um, many, many assume, when we think about slavery, that slavery was just in, in the, in the South. And, and New York was deeply entrenched in slavery. In 1626, the Dutch first brought enslaved Africans to the Lenape Delaware territory, territory, I apologize, called Manhattan. The Dutch called New Amsterdam, and today this place is, um, after, today we call this place now Manhattan. Um, by the early 18th century, New York State had become the largest enslaving colony in the North, with 40% of white households enslaving Black relatives. In 1711, there was a slave market that was established at the foot Wall, at, at the foot of Wall Street. And it's important to know that this is right where Wall Street and Water Street intersect today. Um, this market, which native and Black New Yorkers, um, Black, Black people were sold, remained active for decades. This remained active for decades, playing a central role in New York City's economy. Enslavement wasn't just a Southern institution, it was foundational to New York State's development. I want to go to, um, this slide on emancipation. Um, this, this slide shows that in 1863, Thomas Nass, um, Thomas Nass, um, his illustration of Harper's Weekly depicting the horrors of slavery contrasted with aspirational visions of freedom. And this inspired, including payment for work, public education, homeownership, and these were the dreams that formerly enslaved people had. And it was, but the reality of post-emancipation, certainly it fell short of that. Reparations are about bringing the vision of communal abundance to fruition. HR 40 was established as a, the, a National Commission to Study and Develop Reparations Proposal for African-Americans. Um, it was first introduced in 1989 by Representative John Conyers, um, and reintroduced to Congress every year since without passage. Just want to share quickly that California became the first state to establish a reparations task force in 2020, with New York being the second state. Um, California's report was, um, submitted in June of 2023. And here you have this map of all the states that have some sort of task force, um, in 22 localities, um, that are, um, in, in nationally that are working on reparations. So a little bit about the commission. Um, the commission was established by our very own Governor Hochul, and we are grateful for her and, and just having the foresight to work with the legislative body to establish the committee. The bill was sponsored by Assemblymember Michaela, um, Salage, I'm sorry, and Senator James Sanders Jr. And the commission is tasked with examining the legacy of slavery, subsequent discrimination, and the continuing impacts, and developing recommendations for appropriate remedies. I want to be clear that the commission does not enact reparative policies or provide payments as compensation or restitution. The commission will make recommendations to the elected officials. And I think it's important to know that this, the commission's work is to provide the recommendations, and it will be up to the community to champion those recommendations to the legislative bodies to make sure that those recommendations come to fruition. And that is the work that we are doing today. We are gathering data from you all to inform the recommendations of the commission. The commission is tasked with examining slavery, the, um, examining the legacy of slavery, subsequent discrimination against, um, African Ameri, people of African-American descent, and the impact of these forces. Um, certainly in how they impact us in present day. Um, and then we will need to comprise a report, and with that report will have conversations that we learned. It will have, it will, those conversations that we learned from these public hearings and the research that we will do will inform the report. The report is due in January of 2027. The final report will be submitted to the temporary president of the Senate, the Speaker of the Assembly, the minority leaders of the Senate and the Assembly, and of course, the Governor of New York State no later than January 27. So here are our core mandates here. Our core mandates are to research economic, social, and political impact of slavery, structural discrimination on Black New Yorkers from 1626 to present day, to determine who is eligible for reparations, and also hold public hearings and public gatherings for community input. We'll also develop the comprehensive report that I talked about, um, outlining the harms and reparative measures. Additionally, we'll recommend the polity, policies, programs, and restorative, um, practices. Um, we'll coordinate with our local and national, um, and state leaders to ensure that these policies are, um, come to fruition. That is our work. Here's a copy of the, um, the bill. If you want to learn more, you can go to our website at newyorkstate.gov/reparations. And you can read the, um, the bill and learn more about the work that the commission has been doing. I want to acknowledge that there are three commissioners here today, but here you have all of our, all but one, actually, Commissioner Daniels is not in the, the, um, the photo here. But we have Commissioners Linda Brown Robinson, who's here to my left, Commissioner Lorie Daniel Favors, Dr. Ron Daniels, Dr. Derek Hamilton, myself, Shawna Hawkins. We have Commissioner Timothy Hoag, who's here today, Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin, our vice chair, Dr. Deborah Jenkins, and our secretary, Linda Tarrant Reed. And I should also acknowledge that Jennifer Jones Austin served as our treasurer. Our commission staff, we want to acknowledge and thank our commission staff. We have Erica Row Owen, we have Jesse Adwa, Stuart J. Mitchell, um, Worded Warriors, and our policy associates. And we are also looking for staff. We also have, um, we thank Dr. Makini Straker, who served as our executive director for our first phase of our work. And now we are searching for an executive director to take us through Phase Two for the commission. Again, here's more information about our website. You can visit us at NY.gov/reparations. We also have an official email. And I want to just acknowledge that if you are watching online right now, um, and unable to be with us in person, you still can share your testimony with the commission by sending an email or calling. Um, we have a number that you can call, and it's 518-473-3997. You can call in and you can leave a message as long as you want. So we encourage you to attend the meeting, attend the public hearing, and learn more about, um, the commission. I want to just explain quickly, we have two types of meetings. We have a business meeting where we conduct the official business of the commission. You'll typically see five or more commissioners here with us today. But today is a public hearing. And a public hearing provides an opportunity for the community and any interested par, interested party to share their recommendations, their concern, their provide their testimony to inform the commission's report. And so we hope to hear your well-thought plans for how we can inform the commission's report. And we thank you again for being here today. I've already shared how you can write comments in and get involved. Want to share just how you can get involved. As I said, you can attend the public hearing, you can, um, host a public hearing, and, um, that's how we got to Ithaca. So we want to thank a mayor again for bringing us here. Um, we are grateful. It was the mayor's, the mayor's effort to bring us here. And, and you made sure we had a beautiful facility. And so we want to thank everyone here at the Convention Center. It's a beautiful location. And thank you for making us feel welcome in Ithaca. Um, you can sign up to testify at the public hearing. And hopefully, all of those that are here had an opportunity to sign up for the public hearing. You can send your recommendations to us via email, as I've already shared. You can engage in dialogues and workshops. Those are coming soon. As, like I said, we're going through our Phase Two. And you can volunteer for community outreach. And we thank everyone who's volunteered or serving in this role today to help us bring this public hearing to life. Um, and so we, when you provide your testimony, we hope to hear from you what reparations could look like. And so here's some of the ways. You can, um, talk about economic restitution through housing, education, employment programs, policy, um, address the inequities, including criminal, um, legal systems, Black White Wealth Gap, food insecurity, environmental injustice, addressing disparities in healthcare access and outcomes, investing in Black-owned businesses, educational reform, direct financial compensation, or suggest a remedy for the harms that have been, um, already, or that are, will still continue to see present day. So share your ideas. We want to share that when you go to the website, there is an opportunity to learn that we're hiring. The commission has already hired several staff, and I've shared those already. But we're looking for Operations Manager, and we're also looking for the Public Education Coordinator. I believe the Edge Operations, um, we're, not hiring, I thank you for that. Um, he always keeps me on task. He's our unofficial parliamentarian. Um, we have that one, that Stuart J. Mitchell. But we are contracting with individuals. And I think the position for Operations Manager is closed now. Um, and I think it's just open for the Public Education Coordinator. So check our website frequently. Um, as we are still have, we're looking for an economist. We're in that process right now. We're in the process of looking to contract with an Operations Manager, a Public Education Coordinator, and I think General Counsel. So those are the open opportunities to work with the commission. More to come there, but you can go to our website and learn more. For public hearing testimony synthesis, I want to share just a little bit about what we've learned. We've had 11 public hearings, and we are grateful. And we've done a variety of public hearings, whether they be online or in person. But we've had 11 public hearings and the opportunity to provide community import, uh, input, input. Our first public hearing was actually in Buffalo, New York. Um, so we want to give Buffalo a round of applause for setting the stage. Let's do Buffalo.
Don't do that. You're forcing it out of them.
I'm trying for Buffalo.
My God, with the New York, he's like, mm-mm, no, no, no.
I'm trying for Buffalo.
Buffalo ain't even part of New York. That's what he tried to say.
But Buffalo certainly set the stage and provided community input. And so we were grateful to hear about family histories, personal input, personal testimony, and policy opportunities. So thank you for everyone that participated in the public hearings. And so we've heard about the historical harms that were documented in the testimonies. We heard about, um, Black enslavement, the great migration and discrimination, institutional betrayal, and community destruction. And so we heard that Black New Yorkers, they testified about, um, ancestors that were enslaved in New York, um, that were enslaved in the United States. We heard about New- We heard about how New York's economy was built on the backs of enslaved labor. We learned that banks use enslaved people as collateral for loans. When it comes to the great migration and discrimination, Black families migrating to New York were faced with continued structural and interpersonal discrimination, that we still see some of those harms today. Segregation in housing and education and redlining, we've heard about that. Exclusion of homeownership, exclusions in loans, institutional betrayal, systemic denial of benefits for Black Civil War veterans, educational segregation, and exclusion by design by New Deal programs. Certainly, community destruction, eminent domain and highway constructions deliberately separating communities. The Seneca Village, now Central Park, exemplifying historical patterns of Black displacement. So we've heard that in our public hearings. I'm looking forward to hearing today. We've heard about housing displacement, educational inequities, poor health and well-being for Black New Yorkers, criminal legal systems, mass incarceration of Black people, and how it disrupted families, continuing historical patterns of control and family separation policies in policing, and really rooted in slave catcher origins. And so we've also heard about economic exclusion, whether it be anti-Black credit, whether it be lack of access to business loans. We heard that as well. Additionally, we heard about community perspectives on reparations. And this is where we're looking forward to hearing your ideas. We've heard about compensation priorities, whether they were direct cash payments or corporate accountabilities or veteran reparations. We've heard about structural priorities when we're looking at housing justice and educational access, whether it be free college tuition for Black students or Black New Yorkers, or healthcare equity. Maybe it's free healthcare, but we heard all of these things at our public hearing. Eligibility considerations, we've heard that broad inclusion, and we've heard about lineage-based reparations. And so we've heard those two primary perspectives. But if there are others, we'd love to welcome those as well. Implementation framework and community expectations, some community urgency, and testimony revealed the frustration with the study process. And so there's some frustration with that. Also, the implementation framework. The Office of Freedman Affairs for long-term support and accountability, collaborative solidarity approach, recognizing that Black reparations must consider Indigenous, original land rights. So we've heard all of these things and heard about even using the UN framework, which we talked about adopting that. Community expectations. Some community members want things to happen immediately, want us to have a process that is transparent and accountable and something that is informed by everyone with an implementation process. Community leadership in reparations, wanting to have some involvement in the design and the administration of reparations, and also reparations, having this phased approach to reparations for the ongoing harms. Success requirements, sustained political will, adequate funding, and genuine partnership with diverse, diversity in thought, and nation of origin. Black communities to ensure reparations achieve meaningful repair and prevent future harm in Black New Yorkers. And so we're looking forward to your input. Certainly want to hear your ideas here in Ithaca. We do plan to go to one other city. We're going back to Brooklyn, unfortunately. Last time, was that last? Yeah, that was in, the last one, we unfortunately had to cancel last minute. Want to remind people that it was due to weather. We didn't just cancel, but unfortunately, when we were at Brooklyn, we were in Brooklyn Heights, and we were at the library. They were in a flood zone, and we had some heavy rain in Brooklyn that day. And so unfortunately, we learned 15 minutes before our public hearing was going to begin. So we were all there, and we had to vacate the library. And so we apologize to all of those that were there alongside us as we were there. And we had to pay extensively for Ubers just to try to get out. But we certainly apologize. And we're coming back to Brooklyn. So we're trying to get a date and if, and a location. We're trying to secure a location. But we look forward to coming in October to Brooklyn, my hometown. So let's come for Brooklyn. Go ahead.
So before we get to our presentation, I do want to say a couple of quick things. One, and so thank you, Dr. Hawkins. But one of the, one of the other key elements of this commission is to educate, is to educate the community. And so that's, we build that into our public hearings and our business meetings. The other thing I want to, I just want to add clarity around submitting testimonies. And so for those of you that are here or online, you can, you can submit testimonies 24/7. So it's not just during this timeframe of the public hearing. That's, that's an ongoing opportunity. And as the, as the chair mentioned, they can be as long as you would like when you're submitting either through verbal communication to a, to a voice messaging system or written communication. And so the last thing I would like to say before we get started, when Dr. Hawkins talked about building those expressways and roadways through intentionally, through the, through Black communities, we see some of that work starting to happen right down the road in Syracuse on I-81, where they're reimagining that and starting to work on tearing that down and correct that flow. And so I was just there Monday with the governor. We were, we were touring a lot of the facilities and the areas for redevelopment and the intentionality that they're doing to do that. And so all that is possible only through, through your participation and your voices being heard. And so I thank you for being here this evening to, to, to learn, to listen, and to participate and provide comments. So thank you.
Commissioner Brown Robinson.
So Commissioner Hoag, just.
Oh, that's your home. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, that's your home.
That's what they do in Buffalo.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
No apologies necessary. So I'm going to give you just a brief overview or underview of that I-81. My husband and I arrived, he arrived in June of 1968. And not being a New Yorker, because we were raised downstate, and we didn't very often get in vehicles and drive. So when he finally had the opportunity to drive like a maniac, he overshot what I envisioned was Adams Street, and that was an exit off of I-81 South. And as he went down the southbound side, he said, "That looks like the Black community on the right." So he went down to the next exit, which is Brighton Avenue. And he came back around, and he says, and he came back up on the northbound side of Route 81. And he said, "Looks like the Black community on this side." He goes, "Oh, no, this has got to come down." So in 1968, in June, is when he had the first vision. So the rest is bittersweet, but I will say that at his funeral in May, Kathy Hochul, Governor Kathy Hochul, said she was naming that stretch of land under the highway when it comes down as Van Robinson Way. Correct? And I get to take the first slug, according to the DOT commissioner, because he has the sledgehammer that he's using, and he talked about it for I don't know how many years. So I get to take the first slug in his stead.
Thank you.
Van Robinson. And thank you for continuing the work of our dear love Van Robinson. All right, I want to just really prepare for our presentation. And I'm grateful that we have Dr. Sean Bradwell here with us. I wanted to just share, because Commissioner Hoag just highlighted that we are educating our community. It's important that most people, when they come, they're very surprised that we provide this opportunity to educate. But we want to make sure that we level set for everyone. And it has been a learning for us as commissioners. As we visit each city, it's really a deep learning process as we learned New York's deep entrenchment in enslavement and the work that has been done in each city, whether it's redlining or the lack disparities in education and in economics here. But certainly, we continue to provide education for our community. And we, as I shared earlier, we are going to be contracting with a education coordinator to continue the work, especially as we get to our Phase Two work. So I just want to thank you all for taking the moment to listen. And I certainly want to thank Dr. Bradwell, who serves as a director for Ithaca College, Ithaca College's Center for the Study of Culture, Race, and Ethnicity. He teaches in the Department of Education at Ithaca College. Professor Bradwell's research and his teaching interests are in educational policy, pedagogy, and social change. Throughout his career, Dr. Bradwell has worked in nonprofit education, public schools, and higher education. Dr. Bradwell, we are so grateful that you answered the call and agreed to come here today, and so the floor is yours. Please give him a warm welcome, Dr. Bradwell.
I am delighted to be here. Can we give the commissioners another round of applause, please? And can we give our elected officials from Ithaca another round of applause? I'm almost afraid to say the word Brooklyn, because people may erupt. Yeah, there you go.
Let's go Brooklyn.
I hail, I'm a New Yorker. I'm an upstate New Yorker my entire life. I hail by way of Amsterdam, New York, slightly outside of Albany. Went to school at the University of Rochester for undergraduate and graduate. And then came here to teach until I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. James Turner. I would say one of the legends and lions in Black Studies when I was doing my PhD work at Cornell. And then I've been at Ithaca College ever since. And so I am upstate. And so we were having a conversation about where do I claim? And I realize I do see a couple of Native Ithicans in the room. I'm 31 years into my Ithaca experience, and I hope at some point in time I get to claim being an Ithican. I'm not sure that's going to take place. When I was asked, I said that I am not an expert on reparations. My research is on the history of education. And I come, history of education, in particular, the history of Ithaca. And I come to that by trying to have a better understanding of why Black and Brown students have not done well historically. In particular, our daughter, who struggled through the high school. And what it did was push me into the archives. So I want to thank someone by the name of Donna Eschenbrenner, who works at the Tompkins Colony History Center, who was extremely helpful. I knew I was going to be a shooting guard for the New York Knicks. That didn't work out so well. And so I had an Achilles injury. And I mentioned that to say that part of my recovery was sitting in the archives, why people brought me boxes and boxes of things to read, to explore. And that gave me a much different experience and expectation about the community that I live in, the community that I love, and the community that I call home. I'm going to do a couple of things, and I'm mindful of time as well. And so any point in time commissioners tell me to continue on. There's a famous saying, right? You don't give a pastor or a professor an open mic. But with that being said, I asked my spouse if this would be an appropriate start, and my spouse said yes. And so here's where I will start from. I don't believe time is linear. I believe that we constantly find ourselves having the same arguments and conversations, debates, discussions over centuries and centuries. The names may change, the details may change. But when we strip away all of that rhetoric, it is almost always exactly the same. And with that being said, I want to start with a little bit of a personal story to highlight the way in which I understand enslavement just in general. So what you see here, and students of mine have seen this, this is the estate of the late John Bagels Sr. from Goose Creek, South Carolina, in 1852. This part right here is the appraisal of John Bagels' estate as shown by John Bagels Jr. So upon John Bagels' passing, his son showed the estate to see what monetary value they would receive from that. In here, you cannot see it, but we'll do a next slide in a minute. There are the cupboard, there are hogs, there are teacups, there's a plow. And if we just focus on this part right here, just this alone, we will find that there are people. So the inventory and appraisement of the personal estate of the late John Bagels Sr., as shown by John Bagels Jr., includes the following valuation. Negroes, June, $300. Jenny, $100. Martin, $300. Peggy, $5. Louis, $800. August, $375. Molly, $600. James, $600. Child, $500. Lizzie, $300. For a grand total in human chattel and people, for $4,380. Now, I show this because this has extreme personal relevance as my family genealogy has researched, that the person you see here as June is my great-great-great-grandfather, June Bradwell. John Bagels owned the property. The property was bought by John Bradwell, the Bradwell Plantation in Goose Creek, South Carolina. And as was the norm upon emancipation in 1865, it was regular for enslaved people to take on the last names of their former enslavers. So when my students call me Dr. Bradwell, I know what that's a reference to, right? I live that legacy. I walk around that intentionally. And I ask my students to call me Dr. Bradwell for that very purpose, for me to understand and remind myself of where I come from. And as the great Phoebe Brown said to my ancestors, "I understand the assignment." But more importantly, I show this for a tech, a part that we don't spend enough time on from my perspective. There is no doubt that we know that the labor that was provided was part of the economic engine. There's no doubt that, well, I don't think we spend enough time talking about the ingenuity and the genius of knowing how to farm particular climates that may not have been native to other folks. And I'm not disparaging Indigenous community. We'll get there in a moment. But if we're talking about folks around the equator of the continent of Africa, there are some similarities between that and, say, Southern agriculture. But more importantly, when we add up all of John Bagels' estate, the hogs, the cupboard, the clock, the plows, you name it, it's a grand total of $4,821, which means 91% of the wealth of this one estate is in people. 91% of this one estate is in the value we attach to humans. And so that's a lesson for my students that I try to make sure they focus on, to get beyond just the labor, which we, it's difficult to do. But when you assign a monetary value to a person, and then that becomes your wealth, there's a reason why we are enduring the same legacies from the time of enslavement, particularly in New York State. My job here is to write as brief as I possibly can of the history and the legacy of enslavement in Ithaca, specifically in Tompkins Colony. But I wanted to begin here just to give people some grounding. There is two good books that I use pretty regularly. One is called Capitalism and Slavery by Eric Williams, the first democratically-elected prime minister of Trinidad. Eric Williams wrote this book in 1944. Eighty years later, we have another book by Edward Baptiste, a Cornell faculty member, whose book is The Half Has Never Been Told, which is very similar, but talking about the making of American capitalism. And both focus on this idea, again, not just of the labor and not just of the goods and services that were provided, but the economic value that we had in investing in people as human chattel, right? So I recognize that we are in the Gaiocano Nation. I recognize that the Gaiocano have been mislabeled as a different form of eradication and disappearance. And so if you drive on Cayuga Street, the misname for the Gaiocano, hopefully you will see purple signs that I know our city has been engaged in that say Gaiocano beneath that. I can't tell you, as someone who believes in symbolic visual importance, how impressive that is. It does not change where we're at, but it is an impressive symbol that reminds us of where we are time and time again. And I know if we go in one of those famous, Ithaca is gorgeous, right outside of Buttermilk Falls in Ithaca, New York, almost directly across the street, you'll see this sign about the Correganale, the village that was destroyed by Sullivan's army in 1799. This campaign, some people call it Sullivan's campaign. I think that is, again, a misnomer. It was a massacre, it was a form of genocide. There is no getting around what it was. And when I'm in the archives, this is one of the best things that I read that said, "With sword and flame, the land was cleared of its former owners." It goes on into much more. It goes on into much more detail about what people were instructed to do. And by sword and flame, what I mean is, as folks may have some idea of what the Finger Lakes were, Sullivan's army went up one side of the lake, down another, crossed over, went up one side of the lake and down the other, crossed over, went up one side of the lake and down the other. And they were purposely instructed to burn the food savings. So it wasn't just burning homes, it wasn't just the sword, it was also making sure that folks couldn't survive the winter afterwards. It was about as grotesque of a military operation as one can imagine. And what does that mean? It means that Ithaca is birthed in this Sullivan's Campaign. You can see Cuyuga Lake, or in the Cuyuga Reservation, or the Anadaga Reservation. Ithaca is where Ulysses, it's the green box, and for you, it'd probably be the bottom right-hand side, the very bottom of that lake. And what folks should know is the person who created these boxes is none other than Simeon Dewitt, the namesake for Dewitt Middle School, the namesake for Dewitt Mall. Simeon Dewitt was New York State surveyor, and he divided up most of New York State land before we started moving westward and thinking about things like Wyoming. No joke, we moved westward to Buffalo, right? We went from New Amsterdam to Albany, to Ithaca, Syracuse, Buffalo, and beyond. So westward expansion begins with this. And each of these boxes represent payment that a soldier who fought in the Revolutionary War, or a soldier who fought in Sullivan's Army, was given one of these boxes of land, 600 acres, right? 600 acres. That was the payment people received for participating in this warfare. So for me, before I can even start thinking about the notion of enslavement, I have to recognize the intentional genocide and the attempt to completely disappear a nation of folks who still fight proudly to this day, right? So we have to start there and recognize the intertwinement. Or as those of us who were able to see Eve Ewing at the State Theater on Sunday said, that America's two original sins are the genocide of Indigenous folks and racial chattel slavery that took place in the United States. And how do we reconcile both of those? So as those Revolutionary War veterans came, they either sold their property to somebody else who wanted to move westward, or they moved themselves. And again, another quote from a book that I read, which grabbed my attention, is that many early settlers brought human chattel and additional immovable goods into Ithaca. So if we think about Ithaca post-European arrival, it has always been a multiracial community. There is no other way around it. It's been Indigenous, it's been Black, it's been European. Nothing to say about the differences in power, or abuse, or violence, but there have always been a racial mix of folks in this community since European arrival, roughly about the 1790s, moving onward. Early in Ithaca's history, there is a book that is hard to read, but is essential for folks to have an understanding of what it meant to be enslaved in Tompkins County. It's a book called Chains and Freedom, and it tells the story of Peter Wheeler. Peter Wheeler was supposed to be free. After his mother's owner passed away, in his will, he decreed that his mother and her children would be free. And yet somehow Peter Wheeler was sold in Manhattan and traversed up to Ludlowville slash Lansing and Tompkins County. Peter Wheeler's story is one of the most grotesque stories we have of enslavement in Ithaca. His owner, Gideon Morehouse, beat him mercilessly multiple times, so much so that his neighbor actually assaulted the slave owner for being overly violent. They had a court case, we can read the court records. The neighbor lost on the assault charge, but won on trying to get Peter Wheeler free. And not so long ago, in 2020, the town of Lansing acknowledged Peter Wheeler's presence in the community and this story for us to pay attention. And part of the reason why I talk about it is I am a firm believer that notions of racial justice require interracial cooperation to be solved. What I say, and I apologize in advance to the media or to the cameras, if Black folks could end racism, that shit would be over. If women could end sexism, that shit would be over, right? So we're not talking about the marginalized communities and having their responsibility to solve these forms of oppression. What it needs is cooperation and folks, a group willing to be able to put not only just their privilege, but reputation and other things on the line as well. And so this sign talks about the way in which Thomas and Henry Ludlow, the namesakes of Ludlowville, were also active in getting Peter Wheeler free. And then spends the rest of his life as a sailor and writes this book much later in his life. So a fascinating book, again, tough to read, but a necessary book if you want to understand the history of slavery in Tompkins County. Similarly, a famed person in Ithaca's history is Peter Webb. Peter Webb worked on the Speed Farm. In 1811, Peter Webb and his master, John J. Speed, make an agreement that Peter Webb could buy his freedom for $350. It takes Peter Webb seven years to earn $350. When he goes to John Speed, John Speed says, "Yeah, that was our agreement in 1811. You owe me $34 of interest." And so Peter Webb, and one of the stories that I don't see all that often as a historian talking about enslavement, of people being able to buy their own freedom, to purchase their own emancipation. And one of the first things that Peter Webb does is make sure that he becomes the owner of his spouse, not to own her, but to make her free. This is a time, as many of us may know, where New York State still made slavery legal. New York State's abolition of slavery is problematic at best. We passed a law in 1799 called the Gradual Abolition of Slavery, or the Gradual Emancipation of Slaves. We said in 1799, "You'll be free in 28 years." And we gave people 28 years, excuse me, we gave slave owners 28 years to extract the monetary value of the people that they owned. So that'd be the equivalent of me saying, "Let's pass a law right now in 2025, and I'll see you in 2053." That's what that looks like. And so Peter Webb was free in 1818. Amazing story, loses his emancipation papers, takes out an article in one of the local newspapers, says, "Look, I have a little bit of money, I have a couple of IOUs, and I have my emancipation papers. I will repay you handsomely if you just give me back my emancipation papers," right? That's in 1823, because he's still afraid that it won't be complete freedom until 1827. It's a long time for someone to be without their emancipation papers, right? Peter Webb also works with a bunch of Ithicans, a number of Ithicans, to create the AME Zion Church. If I'm not mistaken, other historians can correct me, it's the oldest religious building in Ithaca still standing, built in 1833. It is an amazing church, I highly recommend it. Peter Webb, we also have records in 1834 and 1836 of Black students attending schools in the basement of this building in particular. I'm going to move it along, good folks. There, right outside of AME Zion Church, there is a monument that is dedicated to the 26 soldiers, and I say 24 families, because two fathers and sons joined together to fight in the colored infantry. There is a documentary built, or made by a local film company, which I would recommend, and I probably recommend it only because I narrate it, but that's not the point. But it's a good story for us to learn again about the ways in which folks were trying to fight for liberation and emancipation. So to move and talk about, a little bit more about the legacy. We know that at any point in time, more than a couple hundred folks were enslaved in Tompkins County. When I read local history, I am dismayed that I read that at times people will say that Ithaca was not a major stop on the Underground Railroad. I do not know how any historian will know that. And what I mean by that, if it wasn't for you, and you weren't supposed to know, then how do you know? The whole point of an Underground Railroad is that it's underground, right? And so we don't know if we are a major stop or not. That's what I'll say. And by some records, we can at least quantify that there may have been 100 to 150 people. Over a 25-year span, that is not a small stop, right? That's 100 people who were able to receive freedom, emancipation, liberation, by coming through here through a network of folks who helped make that happen. And I don't want to belittle that history in any way, shape, or form. I already mentioned I'm a Cornell alum, so I am not disparaging Cornell. But I also want to recognize the community that we live in that also struggles in multiple ways. And so Cornell is formed right around the time that we are having national forms of emancipation, 1865, students start coming on campus directly, 1867. And Cornell oftentimes gets talked about in Black history for a couple of things, one of which is this, and I'm not, again, to any fraternity, I am not an A, I'm not an Alpha member, so I don't want anyone coming at me, right? But, you know, sort of famously, Cornell University gets labeled as being the home to the first Black Greek organization in the nation. And it's interesting, if you talk to members of AFI, when I have conversations with them, they are very clear about their language. And their language is, "Ithaca is the home where AFI was created by students who attended Cornell University." Why? Because their experience in the dorms was so horrific that they moved off campus and into the community. There was a reason why AFI was not created on campus, and it was created right near the Greater Ithaca Activity Center in our downtown community, which has its own historic plaque. So for me, that's an important thing for us to realize. You cannot build a system of enslavement that is built upon violence and the ability to make people unhuman or inhuman, and then not think that that would not transfer over for generations when you built things, notions of inferiority to help explain and describe why you could enact these forms of violence on folks. Five years later, again, digging in the crates, one of the quotes that caught me, something that our child experienced in different ways, but the quote is, "In the South, it is, of course, out of the question for a colored person to think of entering an institution of the standard of Cornell. In the North, a dark face is often turned away, disappointed, and deceived from a school that is not honest enough to put up the sign, 'No Darkies.'" That was in 1911, right? And so we're already finding folks grappling with this experience about what does it mean to be a Black person in this community in particular, right? Not to say that things weren't shared, or experiences weren't shared, because they definitely were. I show these photos as often as I can to remind my community that while Ithaca is often labeled as being progressive or liberal, as were, or as one of my colleagues in the audience says, that Ithaca is so liberal that it hovers right back on top of being conservative, whatever that means to play that. But this notion of us being a inclusive, welcoming, affirming community is both true and not true simultaneously, right? We can hold multiple truths at the same time. This is a photo exactly 100 years ago, just under, this is October of 1925, of a Ku Klux Klan rally that marched through Ithaca with 500 members through the streets. For Ithicans, we know exactly where this location is, because it is one of the more prominent locations. It is the parking lot of Barnes and Noble, which were the Tompkins County fairgrounds at that point in time. And anyone who is familiar with Ithaca geography knows that you can see the South Hill industrial building in the background, right there. And so I also show this photo to my students, one because of the visual of it, they're reminding ourselves, if we want to have a conversation about racism, we also have to have a conversation about how it is intergenerational. It's not just the grown men who marched in 1925, as we can see through this photo, it's the next generations that come behind them as well, and we're exposed to very similar things. So what does it mean? It means things like this. It means when I go looking through the deed book of the house that my spouse and I bought, we made the unfortunate mistake of buying a farmhouse that's over 200 years old. And at one point in time, was one of those properties that did have 600 acres, and over the years have sold off acre after acre after acre, still within the city. But when you go and look through the deed book, you will find covenants like this, where it says, "No part of the premises shall be conveyed to, or leased to, or occupied by any person other than a white citizen of the United States." That is our community. That is 1931. That was legal until the late 1960s. And this is just one example that I could find when I were looking through my deed book, right? If I go looking through other deed books, I'm certain I will find similar covenants that help describe both how our community looks today and how it has looked historically as well. There's a reason why Dr. King came to Ithaca, New York, not just because of the invitation at Cornell, but there was an organization fighting against housing segregation in 1961, right? This is not new, right? Again, the legacy of racial chattel slavery, the legacy of settler colonialism, the legacy of land displacement makes these structures, these policies, these practices, these mores, so that we struggle to undo them, to disentangle them. And that's partly why we had Dr. King come visit, at least on two different occasions here in Ithaca. As I get close to wrapping up, this is, this particular incident is probably responsible for some of my intellectual training, and not the photo itself. Please do not misinterpret my saying, or take my words out of context. But some folks may know, we call this the Willard Street takeover in Ithaca. There were a group of students who took over Willard Street. The way in which I hear the history is they did not have guns when they originally took it over. They were being, in essence, attacked, and folks brought them guns for protection, and then they were able to work out an agreement where they came out of the building. But I show also to my students to think about, photoshopping is not new. This is the Newsweek cover from 1969. It would look vastly different if they used the actual photo, which you see right to the right. We've been trying to find ways to manipulate images, to manipulate the story. If it says, "The university under the gun," would look vastly different if there were also white folks in the photo as well, right? So a small example, and the reason why I make mention of this is within two years of this incident, we have the formation of the Africana Studies Center, which is one of the premier Black Studies Center in the nation. So I used to use, oh, it was also during Parents Weekend. I always tell people that as well. I used to use these racial dot maps. We don't use them anymore because the 2020 census has been very problematic. And for anyone who studies this, you know what I'm talking about, who we checked up on, who we did not check up on, who we undercounted, who we overcounted. And so racial dot maps are no longer the way, the things that they used to be. But we used to be able to sort of map where folks were living based upon census data. And this is Ithaca, for, again, for folks who are from Ithaca, you will be able to see it. But if you can just take a look at the colors, and I realize it's not the easiest to see, but the colors help explain the racial segregation that we have in our community. We know it based on geography, this hill versus that hill versus this community and that community, that many of us know. But it's proven by data historically, right? And again, a good portion of that is by design, it's by restrictive covenants, it's by who we give loans to or mortgages to, right? It's by a number of things. This is a more recent study, when I was taking a look at Ithaca as well and trying to get some idea, we are not only segregated by race, we are significantly segregated by economics. We are quite possibly, as this map will show you, and I realize it's difficult to read, but for a city of our size to have this level of economic segregation should be jarring. And for me, there's, again, an interconnection between the history of Indigenous theft of land, of racial chattel slavery, and of practices that make our community the segregated place that it is. So this is my last slide. None of us in this room are responsible for the history of racial chattel slavery in Ithaca or Tompkins County. I want to repeat that. None of us in this room are responsible for the racial chattel slavery that took place in Ithaca or Tompkins County. However, whether we like it or not, all of us must reconcile our community's legacy of racial chattel slavery, especially if our goal is to work for justice and a collective understanding of humanity. And so those are my brief comments to set some context. I thank you for the opportunity to have some conversation, and you all know where to find me or how to find me. Please do.
Dr. Bradwell, we thank you for educating us, for sharing the history here in Ithaca. And if you don't mind, the commission would like to ask just a few questions.
Absolutely.
As we continue. So first, let me just make room for my colleagues to the left or right, Commissioner Hoag, or Commissioner Brown Robinson, if you have any questions. I want to make room for that. Want to just, if you can just go back to your slide with the, I just want to learn a little bit of- a little bit about the work that you've been doing with your students.
Yeah.
And how social justice is important. If you want to go back to your last slide, where you said, "This is the work for everyone to really work on the goal of reconciling." And so if I can just learn a little bit about the work that you and your students are doing together collectively, have you been, if you could talk just a little bit about that?
Yeah, it's primarily through two courses that I teach. One is called the Social and Cultural Foundations of Education. It is, in essence, a history class of education, and I make sure while we're talking about education within a US context, to make sure they also understand the ground that they walk on every day, or the schools that they volunteer in, or the spaces that they occupy, that they know that that national history is local history as well. You can't separate one from the other. We've had national events take here that has informed the way in which we engage in these conversations, and we've had things that very few people know, because it's not part of the common way in which we tell or retell someone's story, whether it's his story, her story, or someone's story. I think the better way in which I, and I'm not sure if I have any students in the room right now, I think, yes, I do, one of our, one of our Race, Power, and Resistance majors right in the background, thank you so much for being here, Youssef. I think the current class that I teach is a class called Education, Oppression, and Liberation. And that class is trying to get us to understand what kind of education systems were devised during enslavement, particularly when we know that it was not only illegal to educate black folks, no matter what state you were in, and most part of the country, but it was punishable by either threats of violence or incarceration. So what kind of education system were we creating for black people during enslavement? And then more importantly for me, as Carter G. Woodson says, what kind of education system do we create for black folks immediately after enslavement? What did emancipation education look like if I expected you to still work in the field? If I expected you not to challenge my authority? What's Carter G. Woodson say? If you control a man's thinking, you don't have to worry about his actions, right? And so we study a good deal about how education has been used as a tool of oppression, and hopefully, the goal is to flip that narrative and ask our students, how can we use it as a tool of liberation? Both interpersonally, collectively, globally, that if it was used, on one hand, for nefarious reasons, it can be flipped and used for other reasons as well. And I'm hoping that's what they tried to get out of that particular class.
Thank you. Thank you to you and your students, Dr. Bradwell. I just want to make room for my colleagues.
So, that was, that was an amazing presentation and very, it informed a lot. So I have two things. One, can I come sit in your class one of these days and just, just, just be there? And, and two, early on, so tell your wife, yes, you made the right choice in, in starting the presentation that way. But it was powerful to see the connection that you made to your last name and, and, but also embracing it to, to continue to guide you. And so could you, because a lot of times, we're looking at it and saying, hey, I don't, I don't, I don't want any parts of this. So could you, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. To your first question, anyone in this room can come to one of my classes. It's in my syllabus, I have an open class policy, and partly, I believe, as an educator, I better be prepared every day. And so if I don't know who's going to show up, it keeps me sharp, right? So, give me a call. Now, please don't just show up at the door, right? Like send me an email or a few minutes before.
I'm just showing up.
You have my permission to do something.
He's from Buffalo.
Yeah, that's right.
Come on, though.
I'm at a Buffalo. And then, so the flip side is also twofold. And the other example I did not share, I have another member of my family who ran on the Underground Railroad, was enslaved in Maryland, ran to Pennsylvania. Again, if we want to talk about the North-South, the South was Maryland, we forget how close it actually was, or as Malcolm X said, or El Hach, Malika Shabazz said, "Stop talking about the South. If you're south of the Canadian border, you're in the South." And so with that being said, I have another great-great-grandfather who ran from Maryland to Pennsylvania, looked around, seeing this German community with the most popular name being Smith, and named himself Smith, as an act of liberation, saying, "I want to make it hard for you to come find me, should the slave catchers try to do this." And so I mentioned that story as well to say that I'm aware that names have power, and I am fully aware, and another colleague of mine who's in the audience, and I have this conversation, I am fully aware that, one, I hope I am my ancestors' wildest dreams, best-case scenario, but more importantly than that, that they may not envision the life that we've been able to create for ourselves in their honor, in their legacy. People don't undergo that level of abuse without thinking that their great-great-grandchildren may be in a better position, and I recognize and I honor that.
So I guess I have not so much as being, I'm inquisitive, but I probably have, you take the show on the road, number one.
Maybe.
And, and, maybe. But no matter how much we think we know, we also don't know anything. You opened a lot of eyes. At least you opened my eyes and my ears, because I thought I knew a lot, and, and the man that, that I've spent since 1966 with was a history buff, and he would be amazed at this presentation. So I will tell you, I would like to convince you to perhaps take this show on the road. And if it's a case of funding, I think we could find the funding, because really, no matter how much we think we know, we know less than that. So thank you for the wonderful presentation.
And what I will say is, when you ask that way, I have no response, other than say, yes, I will take it on the road.
Because, as I said, I'm the regional director for the NAACP, and I'm, I have 11 branches, but I'm about to get one more in this area. I hope I'm not telling anything out of school, because the national office in, in, in Maryland has to approve it, but I would love to have you be a speaker on one of my monthly meetings.
I look forward to continuing.
You have my card.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bradwell. We appreciate this time with you and the presentation, and certainly, as we shared early, this is earlier, this is an opportunity for the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies to educate the members that attend, the community members that attend the public hearings, but also an opportunity to educate us as a commissioner, as commissioners, as we prepare to, prepare the report. So thank you for that opportunity to learn from you, and let's give him another round of applause. Thank you, Dr. Bradwell. And so as we prepare for our public portion, and from hearing from you, we're going to take a brief 10-minute break, and if you have not signed up, please sign up at the front, so, and then they'll bring me the forms, and we'll call you up by name, and we'll probably do this by three, so since there are three microphones. So this microphone will be the first microphone, second and third, so you'll line up in the order that I call you. So mic one, mic two, mic three. But if you haven't signed up, we welcome you to sign up. So thank you again for being here, and we'll be back in 10 minutes.
So before we take our break, I just want to give a shout out to our youth that have shown, our young people that have shown up to participate and hopefully be a part of our, our record. So thank you so much.
Yes. And, and I just want to acknowledge, for those that are bringing me the papers, if the youth can go first, because we know that there's school tomorrow. If you have, if there are any youths signed up to speak, I'm going to say they're going to skip the line, and so that they can prepare for school tomorrow. We know how hard it is to get up at 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning. I know I struggle with that. And so we want to make sure we hear from our youth first. So thank you. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
And so even if you don't have particular comments that you want to make, if our youth could just state their name, because this is, this is, this is history. And so this goes into the, the public record, and so if they're comfortable with that, if they want to do that, we want to, we want to capture that for them.
All right. I saw that's tea, so thank you. All right.
No, I was just going to add, some of them look like they may want to, and others don't. So we're not trying to force you.
Yes.
If you're not comfortable doing that, you do not have to.
Remember, Dr. Hoag, Commissioner Hoag is from Buffalo, so, that's what they do. But you're welcome to come if you want to. South Side Community Center, yes. We welcome you. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
Thank you all if you'd like to be seated. So I'd like to again share if you had not had an opportunity to sign up when you arrived, you'll sign up. And here's how it goes, you'll have three minutes. We have a timer here. When the timer goes off, we respectfully ask that you would please, please make room for the next person, okay? Typically, we turn the mics off, but I want to give you just a warning that we would ask that you would make room for the next person. I'm just gonna wait two more minutes to see if my fellow commissioners are able to come back down. If not, we're going to keep going. So as actually while we're waiting, let's bring down our South Side Community Center. And if we can make room for our young people, if they can line up and if you want to, you can introduce yourself and give your name and age, what school you're going, what you're going to, and I think you have a question that you'll answer for us. So this microphone right here, that is, that will be your microphone. So the first individual that wants to go up, thank you for being the first brave soul.
Yeah.
The youth will lead us, thank you. Let's give the youth a round of applause for being here tonight.
I just started talking.
The microphone is yours, the floor is yours.
It's kinda short. Oh, okay, yep, okay. My name is Ayani Bunch, I'm 14, I'm a freshman, I go to LCS. And one way that like racism has affected me in school is there's not a lot of black individuals in my school, including teachers and kids, to look up to. And when racism happened, it's not like identified or noticed as much as I and probably other people would like it to, but yeah.
Thank you, thank you for being here, Ayani. And thank you for sharing, we thank you for being the brave first one. Our next brave young person.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie.
Hi, Mackenzie.
I'm 11 and I go to Duett. And what I feel about the racism in schools is like, I feel like very like mad because I used to read a lot of books about it and be like, that ain't right. Because first of all, one of the books I read was like difference between how white people got treated, how black people got treated in schools. And I heard that, that they just got leftovers and I was like, what is this? Because I feel like they should deserve new stuff. And the others didn't really put themselves in their shoes, like while they did that to them. And I feel like mostly they, in schools, they just teach all about the same stuff and nothing like new. And if it does do schools, I feel like they just sometimes educate us or read us a book most of the time. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that with us.
My name is Malachi, Malachi Wilson, I'm 14, I go to TSC Voces. And the way I think racism affects school, I personally think they're not teaching it right, cuz they're skipping on most of the stuff that actually happened. But I just think they're not teaching it right cuz you can't skip out, can't skip history, that's not how it works, that's not how it goes. And so, yeah, that's really it.
Thank you, Malachi. Thank you.
My name is Naveya, I'm in eighth grade, I'm 12, 10, 13. And I think that how racism has like affected me is like they don't really teach you the correct things in school, like how Malachi said. And it's like racism is just not really taught really well in schools. Like they don't teach you actual things that happen, they only teach you about like, you know, the white people stuff, basically, like they only teach you, no shame, like and they don't really talk much about how it really affected the world and how it really impacted the people who have went through racism. So, yeah.
All right. And if you all have any ideas on how we can improve things, let us know.
My name is Sarah Alahabi, I am 12 and I go to Duett Middle School. I'm not black, I am Arab. And I feel like how racism affects me is like during the entire nine 11 thing, I feel like I got mostly attacked cuz it's only me and like a handful of other kids in our school that are Arab or come from Arab heritage. And I feel like people all thought it was a joke, but it genuinely like impacted us and like our race because of all the hate that we were getting, especially like all the weird looks that we were getting on the, like when we were learning about it. And it just like weirds me out about the fact that people hate me for just my race when I don't do anything to them. And they're like, oh, well, my relative got affected in nine 11. And I'm like, that has nothing to do with me though. And they just like expect me to feel, like obviously I feel bad for you and like I feel empathy for you, but it's not my fault. And people just like, I don't know, but I feel like mostly people just don't deal with racism in schools. And they're just like, oh, they're, you're just playing, you're just having jokes. Some people think it's a joke to be racist, but it's not. Cuz like years and generations of people have gone through racism and I just feel like it's not funny. But some kids in my school think it's funny to just like hard R and just yell it out random times. And it's not.
Well, thank you, Sarah, thank you for sharing. And our last student, your name is?
Messiah.
Hi Messiah. You're doing fine Messiah.
I'm 10 years old and I go to Duett. That's it.
Thank you Messiah, great job. Thank you.
I'm Lushima. I watch the pre-teen group, we call each other the squad. And one of the things that I emphasize about space is making space feel safe, right? A safe space where we can talk about race, but a safe space where we don't have to worry about race and a safe space where we can talk about truth and things that happen. We're actually on our way after this, we gotta go right after this, but we're going to go to a debate club that we establish. And she's the president for now, we got, well, no, I'm saying that we're gonna do voting, but I think you're gonna stay as president. But my other point is, there's a lot of things that we have to dismantle. I'm learning new ways to educate and through this group, I'm learning about better ways to teach and better ways and spaces of learning and how to set that up. And I think part of reparations isn't, it's not just monetary, it's about changing the way that we think. And education, not just scholastic education, not just schooling, education, learning from the kids, well, I call them the kids cuz I'm like, they're not children anymore, but like they have more information and access to anything that we do and understanding about like, you're on TikTok right now, right? Yeah, you're on TikTok, you're straight up on TikTok. But that's my point, that they have access to these kinds of things and they need spaces to dismantle or just to unpack. So all I'm gonna say is that education is definitely the future.
Thank you, thank you so much. And let's give the youth another round of applause. Uh oh, one more thing, yes. Go ahead, Malachi.
I think personally, if you're gonna teach about races, race, said that wrong, if you're gonna teach about racism, at least try and teach it right. Don't like just skip out most of the parts and just go straight to the, oh, slaves did their slave, no. Actually start from the beginning, actually like read it through, through, through and through until you really get to the part that you really wanna teach about. Cuz that's just skipping history and if you wanna skip history, then what's the fun in making history then?
Well, thank you, thank you to the South Side Center. We are grateful for the youth, we're gonna prepare for our public comment, we'll make one last space and then we're gonna, go ahead, yes.
So like Sarah, I feel like how it also really affected me is like, I'm mixed and Latina and so I have been called like illegal immigrant, border hopper, things like that. And I just feel like so many kids in the school, be saying the N-word, be thinking that it's cool to pretend that they're black and everything and I just don't really feel like that's okay and that really needs to be dealt with. But like no person in the school really deals with racism like that. Like no one has ever like done anything about it, no matter how much people report it.
Well, thank you, thank you all for sharing, thank you students. We're grateful that we've created a safe space for the students, to hear from them, to learn from you all. So thank you, now you don't wanna leave, you wanna stay with us, right? And learn. So good luck on your debate today and we thank you for being here. And we hope that we continue this momentum of having a safe space and we welcome all voices, but we ask that we all remain respectful of all voices. And we're going to call you up and we'll just remind you that there is a three-minute timer, just for those that are watching online, we thank you for watching online, if you would like to, you're not here today in Ithaca, Ithaca, beautiful Ithaca, you can email the commission, you can email us at reparationscommission@reparationsnewyork.gov or you can call in at 518-473-3997. And so you are welcome, as Commissioner Hope said, 24 hours, we have, we have a team that will capture everything, transcript of your message and we will use it to inform the report. And so now we're looking forward to your voice here in Ithaca, New York. Again, thank you for being here, I thank my fellow commissioner for traveling from Syracuse to be with me today, to be with us today. So let's begin. The first person that I have on our list is our councilwoman Phoebe Brown. And so you on the list, so if you don't, if you don't, if you all want to decline, it's okay, but you were on the list. And the timer is here.
Yeah, once again, when I went to sign my name, the person said, you gonna speak again? And I'm like, I, for a minute was like, maybe I don't need to speak again, but then this is a topic that I can always speak about, right? I just wanna say that I wanna thank everybody who came from out of town to be here with us. I wanna definitely thank Sean Bradwell for all the information that I got, I learned, whenever he talks, I learn something. So I'm really grateful to be in this community with, with so many brilliant people. However, I came to Ithaca from Harlem, right? And I thought that I was very wised and, and I've learned so much since I've been here. So I'm really grateful and thankful that I came here to a place of learning. But I'm not disillusioned with the whole Ithaca is gorgeous and you, you know, because what I learned happened to me when I came here is that it rocked me to sleep. The beauty locked, rocked me to sleep and I thought I had arrived. And so for people who come to this area and see the beauty, don't let it fool you. There's a lot of things happening in this community that's happening in all other communities. And the reason why I think reparations is so important and the reason why me and others have had many, many conversations at South Side Community Center, invited the community out and been talking about reparations because of the importance of reparation, reparations, it's repairing the harm. That's what it means. And for those, you know, cuz we get a lot of pushback. So for me, I'm just grateful that the commissioners are doing this work, I'm more than grateful that community members has come out and, and, and just support this. But most importantly, I want us to go back to our communities and talk about reparations. And that is what I appreciate more than anything that we began to talk about it. Because we seem to have hidden it, whisper about it, that kind of stuff, we need to shout loud and proud that black people deserve reparations. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Brown, we are grateful that you are here. I want to apologize in advance for any names that I mess up. I'm reading your script, your print too, so I'm gonna blame you all too, or whoever wrote this, I'll blame them. But I, if I just call one of your names, it's because the first name, I don't wanna mispronounce, or the last name, I might not wanna mispronounce. So the fir, the last name that I see is Malik from Shamong Center. And so I want to make sure that I call you up, the next person will be, it looks like Mike, I don't know if that's Sanchez. And then the next person is George, J O R G E. And I can't read, I'm sorry, Jorge, yes, Jorge. And he, so he left, so I am going to cross Jorge off. And then I think it's Zachary Nguyen, so that will be the third person. So we have Malik, Mike, and Zachary? B A Y. Yes, yes, okay. Baena, thank you, I couldn't read all the writing, so, thank you, it's okay, it's okay. So thank you, I, I took it graciously, so thank you for the grace and I apologize to everyone in advance, so please don't hold that against me. So we will prepare the microphone for you and we'll start the timer, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for being here. Very interesting venue and a very interesting conversation that I wish I was more a part of. My name is Jamal Abdoumalik, I'm the chair of the Shamong County Democratic Committee. I'm a proud son of escaped Africans from Upper Marlboro, Maryland. My great-great-grandfather escaped in 1851 on the Underground Railroad, came up to Almyra, New York, decided to stay, changed his name to Reed. And as the story goes, you know, changing the names is part of our family history. I changed my name to Jamal Abdoubalik when I accepted Islam in 1972. And again, an act of liberation and an act of, act of revolution at that particular time. I would like to invite the commission to come to Shamong County, to Almyra. And we have a venue there, the Ernie Davis Community Center, named after Ernie Davis, proud son of Almyra. And I would like to propose some dates if you And I would like to propose some dates if you can, can make it. I would also like to be able to host any, especially your professor that spoke at one of our events that we have, it's called a speaker series. It's part of the educational efforts that the Schumong County Democratic Committee is doing along with our book club. And one of the things that our book club does is try to educate people who may not know what racism is or how they project racism. And we've had a very good turnout for that particular book club, book club sessions. And what I'd like to also do is thank everyone for coming and, and thank the commission for, and hopefully you'll accept the invitation to come to Almyra. Thank you so much.
Well, we thank you, Brother Malik. Thank you for being here. We'll restart the timer and you'll repeat your name for us, please.
Sure, my name is Mike Sigler. So I live in the town of Lansing. I'm very familiar with the Peter Wheeler story and, but it is always great to hear that again and to recognize that we have such a history of slavery right here in Tompkins County. What I feel has been missed from the discussion and I, and I would pose this as a question really of how the commission will reconcile this is, I've always been very proud of New York State and how, you know, it was brought up about John Jay and how he passed the first, you know, anti-slavery law in 1799. That was actually very early in, in the world. He was one of the first people to do that, one of the first governments to go ahead and do that. And then when it was reaffirmed in 1817 and then we had to go back to it in 1827 to finally end slavery in New York State, again, we were one of the first governments to do that. Then I think it's safe to say that without the state of New York, slavery in the United States would not have ended. There is no other state in the nation that gave as much to end slavery in this country. 400,000 soldiers to fight in the Civil War and I haven't heard the Civil War brought up at all and I, I just find that to be interesting since that's such a marked point in this battle. 400,000 soldiers, $150 million, which today is about four and a half billion dollars from New York State to fight this battle. 60,000 soldiers died, you know, to, to end slavery and that was all from New York State. And if you look at abolition and the Underground Railroad, this, this state has done quite a bit. And I just wonder from the commission how that will be either recognized or reconciled or whatever you need to do. I mean, that doesn't obviously count in the extended racism that happened within both New York State and the country. But certainly, New York State, I think, stands out as a state when it, when it came to battling against something, an evil that had persisted in the world for millennia. And finally, people had stood up and reconciled with it and decided how, or at least two, ended. So I didn't know how that would be addressed, but thank you very much. I do thank you for coming around to all these different locations. 11, you said we're the 11th place that you've come and it is obviously an important topic that sticks with us today. I, I look back at the past and when the Civil War ended and the Republican plan to give, to seize the property of these slave owners and give it to the freed slaves and how that was rejected by the US government and how if that had happens, then you may have had some reparations there at the beginning to address slavery, although obviously that wouldn't have addressed the ongoing racism beyond that. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sigler. And, and certainly we will use these, I just wanna remind you that your testimony will certainly inform the report of the commission. And so thank you for your comment today. If you could introduce yourself, thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Zach Nguyen and I live just a few blocks from here in downtown Ithaca. I understand the desire to make up for historical injustices. The reality is that here in, not only in the city of Ithaca, but in New York State, there is a dollar value that is assigned to the project you're working on and the reparation study that has been, $50,000 that has been set aside here in the city. There are people who are having to leave town because of the crushing tax burden that are placed, is placed on them. And that reparation study is just one part of that large burden. A lot of people are leaving New York State because of the crushing tax burden. And I don't believe that reparations would be a, is a worthwhile use of tax money now when there are people suffering right now in the present. Right above us in this building, if you know anything about what's going on at the Astari, there's a desperate circumstance playing out with people who are not getting the level of support they need, whether that be for drug addiction, mental illness, or simply being down on their luck. And I think even if there wasn't to be cash payments set aside at the end of this plan, if it was to come, come to fruition, there is a dollar value associated with renting this room, paying for your salaries, hiring the economists, all the things you've been talking about. So I personally don't believe it is a good use of public resources to be trying to undo historical injustices from, whether it be 50 years ago when racism was still deeply entrenched in New York State or 200 years ago when slavery ended. And come on, every time I talk, Phoebe, come on. So with that being said, you know, I think a lot of people end up where they are in life because of the choices they made. The gentleman who spoke is now a college professor. There's a gentleman named Lonny Johnson. He invented the super soaker. He went to a segregated high school and ended up winning the science fair and going on to send probes out with NASA and is now worth a couple hundred million dollars. And he had every excuse in life if he wanted to not succeed. And, you know, telling people that they're victims continuously and that they can't get ahead because of something that happened long in the past is cruel and sets people up for failure. So I don't think this is a good idea. And I don't think I'm the only one, maybe the only one who's gonna come here tonight and say that to you, but I think that view should be represented. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. I wanna just make one clarification just for everyone here, that the commission members, we are not paid. None of the commissioners are paid. And, and we work many hours and we do not receive a dime. So I just wanna be clear with that so that everybody is clear that there are no salaries for the commissioners. The next person will have, it looks like Jay Netmore, Jordan Clemmons, is it Melethar Shabazz? All right. If you can introduce yourself.
My name's Joseph Wetmore and there's a real tendency in our society to whitewash history and I wanna correct the record that was earlier. New York State, yeah, in 1827, they did abolish slavery and at the same time, they raised the voting criteria to keep blacks out of voting. So it was this mixed bag. It was always this trade-off of, we'll give the blacks a little something, but we'll take even more away from them. And I think this is really, I mean, we talk about New York State being a leader in abolishing slavery, but if you look at what the black community here in Ithaca was doing in the 1870s and the 1880s, they were not celebrating when New York State abolished slavery July 4th, 1827. They celebrated on what they call Jubilee Day, which was August 1st and it was based on the British abolishing slavery in 1807. I might have that date slightly wrong. That New York State was kind of trailing behind other communities and we like to hold up how great we were and miss the fact that slavery was going on here well after 1827. You had people, there's a woman in Lansing who even though she was free, she never left the people who enslaved her's home. She continued there until she died in the 1880s. She never was educated, she never had a family, she never got to go outside the community that was enslaving her. And so in a sense, her life was slavery all the way through the 1880s here in this community up in Lansing. This stuff continues and the oppression continues up today. And I don't have to tell most of this room what it's like, but I think it's important that we recognize that yes, there were things that New York State did that were good, but there was a lot of stuff that balanced that out and was bad. And it was not this wonderful state that was doing great things. It was a mixed bag. It was a constant struggle and it was a constant struggle from a lot of the ancestors in this room to try to make it right. And they kept making it a little better, but it till, up until today, it still hasn't been made right.
Thank you very much. I think, is Jordan here?
Mr. Clemmons, come through.
Is Shabazz, I think it's Melethar Shabazz, are you here? If you're, you're next as well. And then it will be Morrell, I can't read the last name, Ben. Okay, Bienniume, thank you. So if you could prepare, so are you Jordan?
Yes, I'm Jordan Clemmons.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yeah, so my name is Jordan Clemmons. I'm the founder of a grassroots revitalization nonprofit called Unbroken Promise Initiative. And my family came here in, in 1820s, escaping a plantation in Maryland. And ever since, I'm 38 years old and my family has resided, you know, along, you know, indigenous and black, you know, mother's side indigenous and black, father's side, New York City, all the way, you know, coming from the south. And so, you know, I've had a, a really broad education as far as, you know, my lineage. And, you know, what I've been tasked to do since 2020 is to pretty much, like, like Ms. Brown Robinson said, you know, the more and more you think you know, the more you learn you know nothing. And so I'm always coming in to any room, you know, hoping to learn with the opportunity if it lends itself to kind of everybody in the room, kinda, you know, their consciousness and awareness be raised. And so in 2020, I was able to raise the consciousness of my local community here. There was, you know, I love my community, Ithaca, you know, I love everyone here, I love, you know, people, I love society. I still am very optimistic about the future. I'm really appreciative of the advancement as a country that we've made thus far, but we still have, you know, a lot further to go. And I really wanna speak specifically around, you know, the current issues that, you know, go under, under, under this, you know, kinda, kinda undiscussed, you know? And that's, you know, classism even within a lot of our communities, albeit, you know, whatever race and ethnicity or religious or political group you're affiliated with, oftentimes what I've, what currently locally, you know, a lot of my community is going through is, you know, systemic and institutional oppression. And I've been able to identify specifically what some of those barriers are because when I, at the age of six, I took on the responsibility of being aware and being conscious and being, you know, being intentional about every decision I make with the understanding that my mother and father told me that we were oppressed and that they had not figured it out. And so from that point on, from the time I was six all the way till now, you know, I've been observing the system and institution. And then I was bought on by the mayor in 2020 after giving a speech around specifically where the areas of oppression are. You know, I came to the table with a solution. And so now what do I do is I go around the communities and I put together comprehensive solutions specifically to address the institution and systemic oppression, you know, that oppress us politically, socially and economically. And so, you know, I'ma yield the rest of my time, that's my three minutes, but essentially, you know, what we're doing now is we're scaling and we're expanding our efforts to really inform community-based efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. So one of the things I just wanna tell you is that you can share your solutions, you can email the commission, reparations commission. If you email us what your solutions are, any recommendations, we welcome them. And if you wanna just get the rest of your testimony out, call 518-473, right now, 3997 and you can go as long as you want and share that because we wanna hear that. And we apologize, we have to keep to the time limit. And so if you want, if you didn't get to finish, just make sure that you share your name. But thank you, Mr. Clemmons. So I apologize again, Melethar Shabazz, you're next, Morrell Bienniume, and then Zachariah Persol, Pierceall. Okay.
Good evening, esteemed panel.
If you could share your name first, please.
Oh, Morrell Bienniume. And I'm originally from Brooklyn, New York, born and raised.
Okay, Brooklyn.
This is getting redundant. This is getting redundant.
Brooklyn's always enough, okay.
Okay, and I'm here because I, I am an Afro-descendant and I declared myself Afro-descendant in 2018 when I learned about a man named Silas Mohammed, who had been traveling along with his wife, Mashaki Mohammed, back and forth to the UN, trying to get reparations for the American black people. And his travels, he found out that we didn't, they, the UN didn't know where to, where we fit in the whole scope of things because no one had ever represented us before. And so Silas Mohammed, along with 19 other countries, black countries, came up with the name of Afro-descendant that is now UN-recognized and we have a definition for it as well. So it's not a name that was given to us by any other people except for us. And the definition for the Afro-descendant refers to people who descended from peoples who were forcibly dispossessed of their homeland Africa, were transported to the Americas and slavery diaspora for the purpose of enslavement, were subjected to slavery, were subjected to force, mixed breeding and rape, have experienced through force the loss of mother tongue, culture and religion, and six, have experienced racial discrimination due to lost ties from their original identity. I wanna elaborate a little bit on number five. Experienced through force and the loss of mother tongue, culture and religion. Our mother tongue is what, is what identifies us. It defines who we are. That's something that could never be given back to us. It's gone. And I, however, I do applaud Governor Hochul for her attempt to try and remedy this, the reparation solution. I don't think, I'm not in agreement with how is, how was, how she's going about it. We do have a remedy. I have a blueprint, if anybody's interested in it, I do have copies of it. But I don't think staying here, receiving reparations here in the form of education, healthcare or public apology is gonna remedy the 400-plus years of slavery that our ancestors went through. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'd like to share that report with the commission, please do so. You can leave it with us. Erica Owens, she's somewhere around here, but you can, or you can leave it with the folks at the front desk, but we'd like to, or you can email it to us, but we'd certainly like to share that. Thank you for your testimony. Next we have Zachariah Pierceall. I'm sorry.
I'm Shabazz.
I'm Shabazz, oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Good afternoon.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Muhtaz Shabazz. I am a Afro-descendant. I am from the Afro-descendant nation. I am not an African-American, I'm an Afro-descendant because of the issue dealing with reparation. The envious Silas Mohammed have been going out to the Hague in Geneva, Switzerland from 1991 until 2016, trying to find a legal claim to charge America for genocide, which they did. And he had put together a group of attorneys. One of the group of attorneys was called En Cobra. Some of you may know of En Cobra. Like my sister said, the worst thing that you could do is bring us here and strip us of our mother tongue that can never be paid. You cannot pay me reparation through the form of heath. You cannot pay me reparation through the form of healthcare and education grants. I, myself, and the Afro-descendant Nation, when we will, we will receive reparation, but you have to fight for it. We choose not to stay here in America. America is not our home. We was only brought here for slavery. That's it. We come from the seed of Abraham. In the Book of Genesis, Chapter 15, verse 13 through 15, it says, "Know for surety that thy seed, Abraham, shall be a stranger in a land that's not theirs." They shall be afflicted, they should serve for 400 years. So our people, the Afro-descendant Nation, the so-called African-Americans, were those people that was placed off in a strange land, that have served and was afflicted for 400 years. That is not the Jewish people. I have no quarrels with the Jewish people, but that is not them. We are Abraham-bloodline, and in my conclusion, we are not to stay here. So this is getting kind of tongue-tied because it's very, very, it's touching when you talk about reparation. It's touching when you grew up in Alabama and you see certain things as a kid, which I am from Alabama, but I'm from Brooklyn. When I go out in the field, thank you.
Well, thank you. And if you want to finish your testimony, please, Mr. Shabazz, call 518-473-3997. Thank you for your testimony. The next person, are you Zachariah? Okay. And then after that is, it looks like Claus Payton. And it looks like the last name is Deha, Mivette Deha. And so if you can prepare. You can lift it up, yeah. Go ahead, make it, get it to your height. So if you've heard your name, please come on up.
Okay, I'm not really a speaker too much, so I wrote everything I was gonna say on my phone.
Please do. Just introduce yourself first.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I hope that all is well. I want to humbly introduce myself. My name is Zachariah Pierceall. I am an Afro-descendant. I am 22 years old. I was born here in New York, Brooklyn, to be exact. I come here to, I come here today to spread light on our identity given to the black nation of America and all over the diaspora. This identity is Afro-descendant. After bumping heads for a week about the choice of identity, the Honorable Silas Mohammed and his wife Harriet Mohammed, alongside a group of 19 heads of nations in the UN, agreed upon the name Afro-descendant. The Honorable Silas Mohammed and his wife Harriet Mohammed acquiesced with this name for the sake of peace. Afro-descendant refers to people whose ancestors were forcibly removed from America and transported to other parts of the world for the purpose of enslavement, have experienced through force the loss of mother tongue, culture, and religion, have experienced racial discrimination due to lost ties from their original identity. Black nation of America, this name belongs to us. You can pick up your phone or grab any other electronic device with a search web on it and Google the name Afro-descendant. You will surely find it sitting there waiting for you to acknowledge it and accept it as your own. By accepting this identity, we let the world know that we are ready to be independent and go for our own. By accepting this identity, we can establish reparations for our people in not just New York and bring justice to our ancestors whose blood has been shedded through every part of this country since the arrival of us coming here. No people on this earth has suffered the amount of trauma that my people have suffered through the duration of time being here, separated from our homeland in Africa. We are a people that needs to be deeply repaired. And by claiming your new identity Afro-descendant, this is the first step to making reparations needed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pierceall. So I just want to announce that we have about seven people left. And so we'll be closing the public hearing is probably in about 30 minutes. So if you have not had an opportunity to sign up, please do. And so if we can just put that sign up there. But the next person is Clozel, I'm sorry if I'm pronounced, I'm trying to read your script. Payton, yes, so come on up. I apologize.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Clozel Payen, and I am also an Afro-descendant. Now, after hearing my brother and sisters, my brothers and sisters speak, I believe that most of you understand and get the idea. And if you need more information, you could go to Afro-descendant Nation and you'll get more information. But I have basically, it's a comment and a question. In 1865, William Tecumseh Sherman, he met with about 20 black leaders, right? Now, Sherman was not an abolitionist, and he favored the Southern whites more than the slaves. But he had the gumption, the ethical fortitude to meet with them and discuss with them. In other, he asked them, and he was encouraged to do so by other whites and abolitionists because of the conditions of the slaves after the war. He asked the slaves to get their leaders together, and about 20 of them came together. And he asked them, what do you want? Okay? The first thing they said, they want land, okay? After that, they said they want to be left alone. Now, my question is, why is it that every other group gets reparations? The nation of Israel have received reparations. The Japanese, who are in turn, have received reparations. The Indians, a lot of them now are receiving reparations. Why do we need a study? All of us here have, a lot of us here have parents or grandparents who were enslaved. So what is the study going to do? Why do we need the study for us? Now, it's said also that, oh, a lot of black people, they're gonna squander the money. When I grew up, my mother and father worked, and my friends next door worked, they wouldn't squander any money. So why do, why does it, why do people feel that we are not able to manage ourselves? The slaves who were freed, most of them were carpenters, they did all the work. So they were proficient, just like today. I'm a registered nurse by profession since 2001. I know a lot of black nurses. I know lawyers, I know doctors. We're very competent as a nation of black people. We don't need a study. We just need our reparations, and we need to be left alone. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Next, we have Mivette Deha. I apologize if I'm saying that incorrectly. Naim, and then Ken Glover. Those folks are next. If you're here, if you can, please take the microphone. And you can, there are two microphones that work, so you can grab either one. You don't have to make a line.
What I want to say to the Commission is that I want to...
If you can introduce yourself, thank you.
My name is Kenneth Glover, born in Harlem, came to school here, majored in African studies, and I'm a teacher assistant at Ithaca City School District. And I wanted to encourage the Commission to look at this question. One, how did the subordination and marginalization of African people, how was that rooted in history, as well as the Native American community? How was it rooted in history in regard to Ithaca between approximately from the abolition of slavery, 1827, to approximately 1950? What do I mean? What I mean in regard to access to healthcare, in regard to participation in skilled trades, the opportunity to become teachers, the opportunity to attend school. So one of the things, although Ithaca has not had the laws that said you cannot do this because you were black between that period, what we have to go back is to look at slavery. So for instance, in the contemporary, we, at one point, we had a Tompkins County Office of Human Rights, and that's been dismantled. We also had many important books in the library system, unfortunately. Many of the books that talk about our history were discarded. So trying to find the history of black people and African-American community is very difficult. You can look in the Tompkins County Historical Society, and they have a file there about, that looks at the history of African-Americans in regard to slavery. But what, where could people live? Could they get mortgages? Where could they become employed? Could they teach at Cornell University? Could they work at Cornell University? Could they work at Ithaca College between 1900 and approximately 1940? It was by social custom. But now we want to look at public policy. When we want to look at public policy, we want to look at how were mortgages allowed or not allowed? Were people restricted in where they could live? So yes, there is progress being made in the contemporary, but the Commission has to look at the subordination and marginalization. What was its social custom? For instance, who could become a teacher? Who could go to school to get education? Who could become, work in a building trade? Who could build a house? Could you get a mortgage? That is the result of public policy. That is the result of employment policy. That has to be elaborated upon within the report, as well as looking at it on a community basis, as well as talking to scholars that will help the Commission set forth the documentation to do that. When we talk about we were taken from a land, taken against our wills, we know that we were brought here. But the question is, now, how do you repair the harm? So it's not just looking at to say that slave was abolished in 1827, but I will send the Commission some more further comments. I'll send it to you in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glover, and we look forward to your continued comments. So next, I have just one name, and it looks like LaShima, but that was from South Side Community Center unless someone else is here. And then Elizabeth Harden. Elizabeth Harden, are you here? Okay, thank you. And then it looks like this will, after Elizabeth Harden, our last person is Shasta Savage. Okay, you just need to just sign up. So if we could, all right. So we'll make room for Elizabeth Harden. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Harden. Just want to thank everybody here. This is, can you hear me? You can, okay.
Get closer to the mic.
Get a little closer, is that better? I just wanted to put on the record that this is essential work for our community and for New York State. And when people have concerns that people are having some difficulties in this community and this might put a strain on taxes or livelihoods, I want to respond to that by saying this is, again, essential work that we need in this community. And I think we can stretch because I think people in this room and people's descendants have been stretching for a long time. And when I hear the youth from South Side speak up and talk about the racism, I know that's only the tip of the iceberg in this community. And it would be wonderful if this Commission or anywhere else in New York could provide voice for the youth who are experiencing racism in this day and age and continuing to do so. We need money or recognition or more community development or public policy. But we need all of it to support the youth who spoke up tonight. And so they may have an education like I did and so many people in this community did. Thank you all very, very much for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. Is Shasta Savage with us? Okay. What's your name? Okay, yes, I did call your name. So if you can please step to the mic, and then Shasta Savage will be next. I apologize.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Naim Alukda. I am a member of the Afro-descendant Nation. I currently reside in Brooklyn, New York. This is an excerpt from the historian Henry Louis Gates Jr. He wrote the truth behind Forty Acres and a Mule. On January 16, 1865, Union General T. William Sherman issued a Special Order 15, Number 15, upon approval of President Lincoln. The islands from Charleston, South Carolina, the abandoned rice fields along the river for 30 miles back from the sea, and the country bordering, bordering St. Louis River, Florida, and reserved and set apart for the settlement of Negroes, now made free by the act of war and the proclamation of the President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln. What happened to this astonishing visionary program? What happened? Which would have fundamentally altered the course of American race relationships? President Andrew Johnson, Lincoln's predecessor, or Lincoln's successor, and a sympathizer with the South, overturned the order in the fall of 1865. And as Barton Myers sadly concluded, return the land along South Carolina, Georgia, Florida coast to the planters who had originally owned it, to the very people who had declared war on the United States. The justice, President Lincoln was at least moral-mindedly, moral-minded enough to see that land was a necessary part of reparations. However, the land he attributed to the newly-found freed slaves was taken back by the American government. The point I want to make today is that any reparations distributed, and it should be, is past due. Land must be included, must be part of it, separate land-seed territory. Thank you.
I'm Shasta Savage. And then following Shasta is David Hopkins, Amanda, and Solimar.
Good evening. I was going to leave, but here I am. I wrote a little speech here. Thank you for listening. Thank you for everyone who stayed to listen here. It is important to recognize the folks who are in this room tonight. You all made a very specific commitment to be here. Thank you all for being here as well. My name is Shasta Savage. I'm an organizational development consultant, leadership coach, and well-being educator. I always say, in my business, I serve the folks who do not find themselves in the spaces where we talk about things like leadership or well-being. That being said, I was born and raised right here in this community. I now support people right here in this community and also across the region. According to the New York Council of Nonprofits, in their State of the Sector Report in 2025, the data is from 2022, which is the most recent. Tompkins County has the highest nonprofit workforce in the state at 49.3%. A living wage in Tompkins County is $24.82 an hour. I do not get paid big bucks to work at a nonprofit. But, you know, if you think about, you know, why are we here today? What is happening here? A lot of black folks work in these nonprofits. We do care deeply about our communities. So nonprofits face restricted funding left and right. There are lots of hoops to jump through on the, of course, the federal level as well as the state level, local level also. So just wanting to make that very clear, that our funding is restricted and what we can do to support folks is restricted as well. Now, of course, you know, but nonprofits are part of many key initiatives, backbone initiatives in our community that serve people of color. Also, as we know, we are directly in the crosshairs. We are directly penalized for anything that we do to support folks. The building that we're in now, as was referenced earlier, is a result of a huge housing surge that happened countywide to support folks who did not have housing. This is in attempts to make homelessness rare, brief, and one-time. Services and support are a core component to this housing surge. I want to make that incredibly clear. Folks are receiving services. Now, I won't get into deeper systems of harm today, which I could talk about for years, right? But what I will say has been echoed throughout this room tonight. To be clear, we know that reparations are not a cure for racism or... To be clear, we know that reparations are not a cure for racism or hundreds and hundreds of years of injustice. But I will share with you that I am happy to speak more about the recent history, particularly in Tompkins County, if you're open to connecting in the future, and I can share my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, my microphone is off. I said you're welcome to email the commission and call the number to call in your public testimony, and you can share that, and we can, there will be a transcript of your message, and we'll include that to informing our report. So thank you for being here. The next person is David Hopkins, if you're here.
Thank you. I'm David Hopkins. I'm a, I'm an ally of justice, equity, and the pursuit of reforming our culture and of paying reparations where it's due. I believe in reform, takes a basic principle of giving back what's been stolen. Seems simple, but you're dealing with a very complicated problem. It's gotten more and more complicated as the generations go by, the years, the decades, centuries go by, the problem gets deeper and deeper and more and more complicated all along. How proper reparations can ever be made is like a work of magic in my mind. I stepped up to the plate about 60 years ago, taking my place in the progression of activists who have been in favor of equity and justice and reform since the Revolution. In 1964, I volunteered with the NAACP for voter registration as a young teenager, as an admirer of Dr. King, and I still follow his advice in my activism through all of the issues that I have faced through the decades of my short little life. I just want to put on the record that I believe the process of making reparations for Afrodescendants and for American Indians is incredibly important work for all of our culture, with the benefits for all of us European descendants as well, that reform involves giving back what's been stolen, and we can come out of prison with a renewed wholesomeness and a renewed culture. So I believe that your work is of benefit for all of us who live in this land of the Turtle Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Next, we have Amanda Kerschner, Kersk, Kersgesner, I'm sorry.
You got it, you got it.
I got it, okay.
I tried, I tried to put those spaces there.
I was trying to redeem myself, it just, yeah. But thank you for being here.
You're redeemed. I'm Amanda Kersgesner. I, I'm grateful to a young man who's working here this evening who told me about this, because I missed the promotion of it. I was really grateful to learn that you're doing this on a voluntary basis. This community actually has a history of people being in chairs on working groups and stuff like this, and then the people in the chairmanships get paid large stipends, and it creates a little bit of controversy.
Not a dime, not a dime.
No, and that's, I truly thank you for your service. I was really illuminated by the community members in attendance speaking about Afrodescendancy. It really speaks volumes to the work that I've been doing on myself and with, in my own small community about healing ancestral trauma in these lineages of violence. And as we explore this concept of reparations, especially at the state level, I guess I'm more curious as to how money from the system of violence and oppression that we have all been subjugated to will actually create the solutions. Unless we're looking at proposing new systems and new ways of doing things and creating new frameworks, I'm not entirely clear, you know, that money will be the problem or will be the solution, because we've all been a party to it in one way, shape, or another, whether our ancestors may have been in the position of the oppressor, because that comes with its own historical baggage, or in the position of being the victim. There was one person who spoke about being, I guess, indoctrinated with victim mindset. I think there's something to that, because it's only through stepping into self-agency that one can actually achieve their dreams. I would, I would love to think that a community like ours could be a good template for how we begin to heal these rifts and how we begin to move forward. I'm deeply concerned as I see that half of the population in this country is holding only 2.5% of the resources. That's something that's absolutely going to need to be addressed, and that impacts a lot of people. And some of them, you know, people of color may be more disproportionately represented at those levels, but it doesn't take much to fall into the bottom 50%. Yeah, I just pray that all of us can realize we're in this together, and that more conversation is absolutely what's needed, and hopefully thinking outside of conventional frameworks, hopefully helping teach our children how to do business, like I wish I had learned that in high school. Yeah, how to be better neighbors, how to be better citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. So I just want to share, I have one left, one person left. And so if there's anyone else, please sign up. If not, this will be the last person. And I, and I welcome you all to consider your recommendations, and as we've said before, reparative justice comes in many forms, and it's not just compensation, but it's certainly in forms of policy work. And so if you have ideas for policy change, please share that, share that with the commission. So we welcome Solimar Pena Vasquez. So, welcome, thank you. I apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly.
Solimar Pena Vasquez. Good evening, everyone, and I'm gonna read from my phone. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Solimar Pena Vasquez, and I stand here before you as a black Puerto Rican woman who has called Ithaca home since I was 11 years old. I am a mother of three beautiful children, all raised right here in this community. I speak today because I believe reparations are not just about addressing the past, they are about repairing the present and securing the future for generations to come. Here in Ithaca, the legacy of slavery is not just a story in the history books, it is woven into the very structures and policies that continue to shape our lives. As a mother, I have seen firsthand how educational systems give just enough support to our black and brown children until they start to excel, until they threaten the unspoken expectations of where they're supposed to be. My own son had to leave home at just 14 to attend boarding school because the opportunities he needed to thrive were not available here. That is, that is not just a personal story, it is a reflection of the system that was never built for all children to succeed equally. And since then, there have been many more black families that have sent their children away. Reparations to me mean acknowledging these barriers and committing to dismantling them, whether through education, economic investments, mental health support, or community programs that give our children the same foundation other families have had for generations. Ithaca cannot move forward while ignoring the weight of its history or the inequalities that still exist today. We need resources, policies, and remedies that truly level the playing field. I urge this commission to listen deeply to the voices of mothers like me, because we carry the stories, the struggles, and the hopes of the next generation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Solimar. I want to thank the Ithaca community for, one, for all of you individuals staying. I think it's important that you stayed the entire time, and although we didn't go to 8 o'clock, I think you were all willing to stay here to 8 o'clock if we needed to. So thank you, thank you for being here. Please give yourselves a round of applause. We thank you for bringing your voice. We thank you for sharing your ideas, providing your testimony, and sharing your personal story with us. And we look forward to using this information to inform the report. Before I close, I want to make room and thank my fellow commissioner, Linda Brown Robinson, for making the trip and being here with me today, and I want to make room for you to make any closing comments. Yes, let's give her a round of applause, yes.
So thank you. I, I actually thank the mayor for bringing us here, and council member, councilwoman, for inviting us here, having us here. It's been a real warm welcome. We've heard a lot of comments, a lot of feedback, and that'll be included in our final report. But I, you have a phenomenal community here, and it's a little-known secret outside of the Ithaca community. So keep up the good activism in your community, keep up all the good works, don't let up off the gas pedal.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge Professor and Dr. Sean Bradwell, and give him a round of applause for his presentation. For those that don't know or missed his presentation, it is online, and he leads the Center for Study of Culture, Race, and Ethnicity at Ithaca College, and we are grateful for his leadership. Again, we are grateful to the mayor, we are grateful for everyone here at the convention center. This is a beautiful facility, and we thank you for welcoming us. All the folks that volunteered to help us today, and of course, our commission staff that are here to help organize this event, we thank them all. Obviously, we want to thank our fellow commissioners for doing the work, and we want to thank you for being here, for sharing Ithaca's story, for sharing your personal testimony. And I'm asked that you share the work of the commission. We are still very much a new commission, and many New Yorkers don't know that this commission exists, and it's important. This is just one part of the work. Part of the work is learning from you, that's why this is the Community Commission for Reparation Remedies, because the community voice is critical to informing our report. But once we get the report, make the report, it's going to be up to you to champion the report to the legislative body and our governor to make sure that we can bring those recommendations of the commission to life. And so we will look to you for partnership alongside the commission as we create the recommendations that we learn from our deep research that we are doing alongside our researchers and from the work and testimonies that we've learned from you. So thank you again for being part of the work of the commission, and thank you for being here. And with that, I'd like to say that this public hearing is now closed, and thank you again for welcoming the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies. Thank you.